I'd like to call this Board of Ed meeting to order. First, could we all rise and pledge allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mrs. Corso?
Here.
Ms. Levesque?
Here.
Mrs. McKay? Mrs. Purcell?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mrs. Raccio?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Votto. Seven members present and voting.
Thank you.
If I may interject, Ms. McKay and Mr. Votto are on their way.
Hopefully so. So now we're going to have the student board representatives from each high school. And we're supposed to, we have it. Okay, for, I think it's Lyman Hall, is it Kara Benzengport? Did I do all right?
No, it's Kyra.
Kyra. Sorry.
It's fine, don't worry. So this, these past two months, Lyman Hall have been really busy. The Lyman Hall participated in the annual community day, which the student council organized. That took place on November 11th and it ended up being very, very successful. The National Honor Society induction happened on November 21st and we welcomed 28, 48 new members into our chapter. The annual holiday forgiving food drive will be held the week of December 2nd. And at the Powderpuff game, a stuff-a-truck event will be held to collect canned goods. So that's run by National Honor Society too. So everybody brings in cans and it's sort of a friendly competition between the schools to see who can fill the truck faster. And then from our college and career center, internships and winter job shadows are going to be promoted to students at Lyman Hall as an opportunity to learn more about specific career paths. And college representatives are continuing to visit Lyman Hall during office hours, which we have every other week. And then multiple career fairs are being promoted to students such as the Woman in Business Night that was held on November 12th and the Business and Sports Seminar. Freshman Academy is continued during office hours to teach students important skills that help them acclimate to the high school experience. And then from our athletic department, we'd like to congratulate Faith Gambardella, Casey Loughlin, Haley Bruno, and Colin Blake, who had their signing days on Monday, November 18th. The football team and cheerleaders had their senior night last Friday, November 22nd. And the Lyman Hall Powderpuff team will be participating in the 48th Annual Samaha Bowl this Wednesday at Lyman Hall. The football team will be competing against Sheehan at the Karini Bowl this Thursday. And then the trials for the winter sports such as track, basketball, and hockey will begin in the upcoming weeks.
Thank you. Next, we have the representative from Marti Sheehan, Marissa Galicia?
Galicia.
Galicia.
Sorry about my voice. I just got sick like yesterday, so. All right, so Sheehan's been very busy this time of year, as always. On October 29th, the college and career fair happened. From October 1st to October 27th, Sheehan has been holding its annual canned food drive. On November 3rd, the annual fall cleanup project took place at the Quinnipiac Trail. On November 8th, we had a Veterans Day assembly. On November 11th, crew, class officers interact and student council went around breaking leaves for the elderly and veterans. On November 15th and 16th, the drama production, You Can Take It With You, was presented. From November 21st to 27th, Sheehan is holding its annual spirit week where students are given the opportunity to dress up in different days to promote school spirit. On November 22nd, we had our Powderpuff Girls versus Faculty game. On November 23rd, we held Homecoming. Looking ahead, on November 26th, the staff will be accompanied by Sheehan girls to the Powderpuff Luncheon. On November 27th, Sheehan will participate in the Samaha Bowl. November 28th, Sheehan will face Lyman Hall in the Karini Bowl. From December 1st to December 12th, Sheehan will hold its annual Toys for Tots Drive. On December 4th, Instant Decision Day will happen. On December 14th, the annual Magical Dinner Club will be held. On December 19th, Sheehan will hold its second blood drive of the year. And from December 23rd to January 1st, Sheehan will go on its annual December vacation. In Sheehan athletics, all fall sports completed their seasons with the exception of football, who has their last home game this Thursday against Lyman Hall. Our girls soccer team made it very far in states all the way to the semifinals where unfortunately they lost against Old Lime. Looking ahead in athletics, all winter sports are looking to start the week back from Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Item five, presentation and awards. Dr. Menzo?
Yes, we have a few awards this evening. First of all, I want to apologize to the parents and students for unfortunately not being at the town hall. Because of the fact that we're on the third week, we're on our off week for a board meeting, there's already another meeting there. It's much more comfortable at the town hall. It's much more, I guess, I don't know, it seems more like a meeting at which we should be honoring students. This meeting, it's in spirit, it's a great place, but we wish we could have been in the town hall, so we do apologize for that ahead of time. But we are very fortunate tonight to have several students that are receiving awards from both Lyman Hall and Sheehan High School. The first set of awards really is something that we're very proud of because I think this is only our second year actually recognizing students in this area. It's the 2020 U.S. Presidential Scholar Program. And the U.S. Department of Education, every year with the U.S. Presidential Scholar Program, asks each district to select one girl and one boy from the district. And basically, the selection is based on high economic achievement. Also, there is a component dealing with either ag, science, arts, or career technical education courses. So we're very pleased to have two students, one from Lyman Hall and one from Sheehan, being recognized this evening. The students, when they receive this award, they're automatically qualifiers to, automatic qualifiers, I should say, that get a student considered for this award are highest SAT or ACT scores. In addition to high scores, they have to have the other characteristics in the career technical education as well. So we're very proud because again, this is our second time doing this. And the principals worked with their team of teachers and administrators to really select these two students. So at this time, I'm going to invite Mr. Zacco, the principal of Marti Sheehan High School, and Mr. Corso, the principal of Lyman Hall High School, to go up and introduce the students. And I'll come up and I think we'll give Ms. McKay a couple of seconds to just to catch her breath and then she'll come up. And we'll probably go towards the middle because we're tight for space. So when the students can get their name called up, we'll come up and give out the awards. For Marti Sheehan High School, we have Natalie DiDomenico. Just a few words about Natalie. She's number one in her class, National Honor Society president, president of the Positive Impact Club, member of Emerging Leaders, has won multiple book awards, excellence in chemistry, outstanding work and leadership in pre-calc, governor's scholarship semifinalist, and much, much more. Most importantly, she's just a kind and caring human being and I'm honored to have, to be her guest at the Powderpuff Luncheon tomorrow.
All right, and from Lyman Hall, we have two. We'll start with our CTE nominee and winner, Carter Shea. Come on up, Carter. So just a few things about Carter. Carter has over 300 hours of community service dedicated to volunteering at Hammond Asset for the last two years. He's also been a member of the Natural Resources Conservation Academy, which he presented his findings at Yukon. And he spent eight months mapping the Quinnipiac River. So you can imagine how difficult and time-consuming that would be. And I think it's the first time I've ever announced a student mapping a river in Connecticut, so that's fantastic. But he's an all-around amazing young man who just brings nothing but positive vibes to Lyman Hall. He's done a tremendous job and we wish him all the luck in the future. And then the final nominee tonight is Matthew Pettit. Come on up, Matt. Matt, again, is another, as they all are, just phenomenal young man. I know he would want me to mention. That is, he is Lyman Hall's first state champion hockey player and team. He was a big member of the team last year, led them through the state tournament. He's led the team, really helped their development over the years, has done a tremendous job. Is a member of a number of our organizations within Lyman Hall and just an overall positive role model. And whenever we need help with getting the hockey team focused, Matt is the student we go to. So Matt, congratulations and thank you very much.
All right, our next awards are for... It's the best way to do it.
Here, I'll hold it for you.
No, it's all right. The National School Development Council. The National School Development Council is a network of regional school study councils like NESDEC, which we belong to in this area, that support excellence, equity, and continuous educational improvement. The National School Development Council network assists hundreds of schools and school districts nationwide in becoming higher-performing organizations. Each year, they ask districts to identify high school seniors who, in their opinion, have consistently pursued a high level of academic effort and who have also served as a positive role model for the student body. Recipients of the award exemplify admirable characteristics such as their accomplishment and character. Although it can be presented at any time during the academic year, we've chosen to do it in the fall because we'd like to make sure that these students could put this on college applications and get appropriate recognition throughout the rest of the year. So at this time, both of our principals would like to recognize students from both high schools. Sure. From Marti Sheehan High School, we have Eliana Tolentino. Come on up. So just some highlights on Eliana. Her capstone project, she worked very hard working with disadvantaged people in the community. She did a great job doing that. She performs in our Sheehan musicals and does an awesome job if you've seen that firsthand. She's a student athlete and a leader and she serves as captain of the volleyball team. She's received the sportsmanship award, serves on National Honor Society secretary, is a student activist, participates in emerging leaders, and much more. But most importantly, you know, I see you in the halls and you're just always smiling. You're always in a great mood and the teachers were so excited that you got this award and they just have nothing but great things to say about you, so congratulations. Our other student is Dylan Poet, who could not be here tonight. Dylan is also a phenomenal student. You know, teachers had great things to say about him, particularly his physics and mathematics teachers. They just said, you know, his intellect, he's just incredibly bright, helps other students, but most importantly of all, he's just a kind and caring person. So congratulations to Dylan.
Lyman Hall's first representative will be Piper Killen. Piper, come on up. So the next two ladies that I'll be talking about are really amazing individuals at Lyman Hall who do wonderful thing for some of our most exciting population at Lyman Hall. Piper's a member of Best Buddies, Unified Sports, Key Club, the Environmental Club, the National Honor Society, our Crew Club, which their trip was just approved, so they'll be heading to North Carolina over April break to build homes, rebuild homes for those that need their homes rebuilt. Piper just always has a smile on her face and always brings that smile to our other students at Lyman Hall. She's never upset, always going forward, always happy, always excited to be in school, which anyone who has teenagers knows is not always the case. So we do appreciate it. She really does an amazing job and is just an amazing addition to Lyman Hall. So thank you, Piper. Next, we have Caitlin Nolan. Caitlin, come on up. So Caitlin, again, another wonderful addition. She's a member of our field hockey team, our Best Buddies program, our peer advocates. She attended the nursing leadership conference at Yale and is going to be one of the first students in the district to finish the entire medical pathway. So medical careers, medical terminology, and CNA. So congratulations to that. It's a fantastic endeavor and I know she'll use it well in the future. So Caitlin, again, congratulations and wonderful job.
So again, congratulations to all of you using my fancy microphone here. But congratulations and thank you for everything and you're definitely great representatives of our school district, so thank you. Next, the principals are going to recognize our students for the Prudential Spirit Awards. So I'll let them share those. So this award is based on community service and strong character. And it was open to the entire student body and it was certainly a rigorous process. And we have Viraj Patel. Come on up. Viraj, you're only a sophomore, right? Just a sophomore? And you've already accumulated 263 hours of community service and counting? And a lot of that time is focused on working with peer advocates, Vex IQ Robotics Program, The Trail of Terror, and Masonic Care. So congratulations, teachers. Again, it was just nothing but positive things to say about you, your character. And they also mentioned how the rest of the students in your classes look at you as a leader, so congratulations.
All right, and from Lyman Hall, we have Lily Vining. Lily, come on up. Lily's done a tremendous job for us these four years at Lyman Hall. She's a member of our National Honor Society, our student council secretary, the field hockey team, the lacrosse team, Key Club, and SAD. And with all of her free time, she has decided to complete nine advanced placement courses over her time at Lyman Hall, which mom is happy about because that means a lot less money in college. So congratulations and good job. Lily, in my 18 years in education, is one of the most resilient young ladies that I've ever come across. She's really done a tremendous job, has had a fabulous four years at Lyman Hall, and we wish her all the best in the future.
So those are awards for this evening, but I want to say again, thank you to all of the students for your hard work, your effort, your commitment to our school district, and also to their families. Because behind every good student is definitely a network of people helping them, supporting them, driving them from place to place, providing them in the nourishment that they need both physically and mentally, emotionally. And we want to say thank you very much because this is a real help to us in making certain that we're always monitoring what we're doing. And obviously, what we saw tonight are great representatives of what our school district stands for. So thank you. Thank you for sharing them with us during the day. And thank you to our students for all of your hard work and effort.
So first, I apologize for being late. What should have been a one-hour meeting in New Haven turned into a three-hour, two-car accidents experience. And I apologize for my casual appearance. I literally came right here. But what I do want to say, and what is really the most important thing, is the recognition of our students. And you know, the constant theme, the consistent theme I heard was, you know, however you articulate or show it, was leadership skills. And you clearly all possess that. And you've embodied what we on the Board of Ed hope, that you walk away from your four years in high school, you know, getting the most out of it. And it sounds like each one of you have achieved that goal and gotten the most out of you could possibly get. And some still are sophomores or sophomore, so you still have time, but thank you. Thank you for representing the Board of Ed so beautifully and respectfully. I say that from the bottom of my heart. And also, I always want to say thank you to the moms, dads, family members. You know, like Dr. Menzo said, this doesn't happen in a vacuum. There's a consistent theme. Parents that care, that are involved, that are instilling good value system, thank you. Thank you for making our jobs a little bit easier. So enjoy the night. And I guess, I know you want to stay for our riveting meeting, but if for some odd chance you want to leave, this would probably be a good opportunity for an exit time, so thanks.
Could I just say something? Could I just say something before? Our young lady Natalie back there, I just want to point her out to tell you, you may not realize it, but she's a kick butt football player.
So, Dr. Menzo? I assume then we're, anybody, we're good as far as pledge of allegiance roll call? We're all, we're just buzzing through this, okay? And we did awards, right? Yeah, okay, cool. Thank you. Okay, item six is next on our agenda. Any questions for the Board of Ed? Any questions? Okay, with that, can I get a motion to go into executive session for items E1, Discussion of the Superintendent's Evaluation; E2, Discussion of the Superintendent's Contract; E3, Discussion of Leave of Absences; and E4, Discussion of Acceptance of Resignation?
So moved, second.
Have a first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries for an executive session. Okay, we are back. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, we're back, we're out of executive session, excuse me. So item seven is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.7?
So moved.
Second.
Have a first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, we have no items. We move from the consent agenda, so we're all set there. Mr. Reynolds, correspondence?
Yes, we'd like to thank Quality Subaru for a donation of science and STEM books valued at $3,060.08 to the Merian Middle School Library and Media Center. And we'd also like to acknowledge that we received a thank you note from the Turner family.
Thank you. Item 10, our committee report, starting with ACES. Mrs. Levesque?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The ACES Governing Board met on November 14th, 2019. The minutes of the October 10th, 2019 minutes, meeting were approved. Under the Executive Director's Report Progress and Recommendations Regarding the Strategic Themes for the ACES Design Plan were presented to the Governing Board. Policy Number 5999 regarding the lottery and application process for the Educational Center for the Arts was discussed and questions were answered by Leslie Abatello, the principal of ECA. Tuition and service fee proposals for 2020-2021 school year were presented to the board by Timothy Howes, Assistant Executive Director for Services. The Governing Board approved the filing of fiscal reports subject to audit, the Human Resources Report, and the early head start updates. Under the Curriculum and Instruction Report, Mr. Rice indicated that there will be an open house on November 19th, 2019, at Educational Center for the Arts. ACES is participating in trauma training and C-bits and bounce back. And Wintergreen Inter-District Magnet School received an arts grant. Whitney North applied to be a site for the ASE Automotive Certification Program. Under Old Business, the second reading and approval of the following policies took place. Updated Policy 4111.1, Equal Employment Affirmative Action; New Policy 4999, Public Complaints Specifically Regarding Anonymous Letters; and New Policy 5999, Admissions to the Educational Center for the Arts Magnet School. Under New Business, the Governing Board approved the four strategic areas of the second iteration of the ACES Design Plan regarding building capacity, knowledge management systems, communications, and project management systems. The Executive Director by February 2020 was directed to develop specific measurable outcomes and to organize agency resources and personnel on these focal areas through 2023. The Governing Board approved the salaries and benefits for 235 non-bargaining employees, including a general wage increase of 2%, step increase for those employees not on maximum step, a revised dental insurance plan, and the phase-out of the health insurance waiver effective July 1, 2020. The Governing Board approved tuition and service rates for school year 2020 through 2021. The Governing Board also approved the specimen resolution to restate a public schools 403B tax-deferred annuity plan document. Voya Financial is the third-party administrator that oversees the options. The next ACES Governing Board meeting is scheduled for December 12th, 2019. There are 64 Wallingford students attending ACES programs.
Any questions or comments?
Just a question, are the tuitions going up?
They are. And I don't have the percentage with me.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to know if they're going up.
Yeah, they are. They've tried to hold it. They're not the highest by any means and they gave us a printout of where they fall with regard to other outplacement. So I can get that information to you if you're interested.
Well, we're going to need it for budgeting.
Yeah, so. I can get that information to you, Dr. Menzo.
That'd be great. I don't know if they sent that over just yet. We haven't gotten anything from...
Okay, I'll go through the packet and I'll bring it over to you.
We do pull that together, correct? Thank you.
Yep, okay.
Great, thank you very much. Item two, School to Career Business Think Tank. Dr. Menzo?
Yes, we had our meeting on November 1st, at which time we had a great turnout. We had actually representation from the New Haven Manufacturers Association as well as Workforce Alliance. And we discussed at that meeting, we started to get back from businesses looking at developing a career ladder for each of the local businesses. So looking at a business in general and determining what are the different careers that they have within their business, be it advanced manufacturing, a business that might be dealing with, you know, for example, a service industry like a salon, but trying to figure out what are their career paths within their industry. And then we're looking at determining what courses do we offer that can make our students better candidates if those career paths do not require a two- or four-year college degree. So we're trying to map this backwards. The gentleman, Jamison Scott, was from the New Haven Manufacturers Association. He was there. And there was another gentleman who was part of the Central Area Manufacturers Association. They said that no other place was doing something like this and they were very interested to see what our outcomes would be. So we happened to getting those back. In addition, we also talked a little bit about the development of a gap year program for students who graduate. We talked a little bit about this at another board meeting where I mentioned this. Two different versions, potentially offering it for students that are seniors in the second half of their year to do a little exploratory, more in-depth exploration prior to graduation, but then also post-graduation, developing a program. The key thing that we decided was that we need to go to our students. So after the new year, Mr. Covey and myself are going to work with the high school principals to talk to groups of students as to what would they want to experience in that gap year. We kind of thought that we want to make it an opportunity for them to maybe travel a little bit as well as explore careers, but we didn't want to necessarily build something that nobody was going to come to, so to speak. So that was, the idea was to go to our constituents. So it was a well-attended meeting. It was, I think there was a lot of good conversation. I know we got compliments from the guests that were there for the first time on how there was so much discussion and focus on this in our community. I know Mrs. Costelli was there.
Yeah, I was going to ask if you wanted to add anything, Mrs. Costelli.
Just a couple of comments. One was, I noted one of our, actually, I think it was Joe Mira was the one who said this. The path that doesn't require college, he said it's no debt required. And I thought that was, he said that's the message we want to get out to parents, that this is... Because I think there's still some parents that feel, and my own son and daughter-in-law, you know, they've got little ones that just started school. And I said, "Well, you know, there's paths that don't have to go to college." "Oh, no, they're going to college." So that's great, but there's other avenues as well that we need to start developing and allowing kids to explore those avenues. And there was one more comment I wanted to make. I don't remember, but I know this is your passion, you love this. Oh, I know what I wanted to say. The new, some of the new folks that were there, they also pointed out what we've heard before. It's the soft skills that need a lot of work, the communication skills, and the, you know, just the social skills, how to pick up a phone and... just the social skills, how to pick up a phone and answer it, things like that. So, it gives us some food for thought.
Great, thank you for the feedback. 10.3 is PTAC update. You go ahead, Mrs. Latour.
So, we had our November meeting last Tuesday, it was well-attended, and most schools had representation there around the table. We had a presentation given by Tony Loomis in regards to career pathways and the Curriculum Planning Guide. He walked through the different pathways that the district has been able to establish over the last few years, as well as introduced the Curriculum Planning Guide and where to find it, to the parents that were around the table, spoke of the career fair that's coming up in April, that it's a combined district-wide event, where we are condensing from multiple career fairs that are done across the district into just one. There was good questions from the people around the table, and it was, all the links to the presentation and to the guide are in the draft minutes that are on the website currently. We also had the opportunity just to update the group about different community events going on between STEM Town, the Coalition, Wallingford 350, so it was good conversation regarding that. The YI volunteer video montage that System-wide PTAC is putting together will premiere at the Parent Choice Awards that are coming up in a few weeks, so that was discussed. And really, as well, the Parent Choice Awards themselves, that we're looking forward to Thursday, December 12, at 6:00 p.m. at Sheehan this year. Dr. Menzo, Ms. Bellisi, and I will go around the Monday and Tuesday after Thanksgiving to recognize the staff that was nominated. Parent letters will be going out at that time as well. It's really a great evening, if you all can attend, it is, it is a wonderful event that is now in its third year, to celebrate all of the great faculty and staff that we have around the district. And then, at Roundtable, the different groups just updated the entire group on what each System-wide, what each PTAC is doing. Special Ed had another, Special Ed PTAC had another very well-attended evening last week, where there was a presentation given by CPAC about planning and the family's role in a PPT. And then, they're also doing another presentation in January about understanding challenging behaviors. And then, the different schools also presented their topics that have been discussed at their most recent meeting. So, the next meeting is in December on the 17th, it will be here at 6 o'clock.
Perfect, thank you. 10.4, Plan of Conservation Development, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing new.
Okay, thank you. 10.5, Food-Service Strategic Plan Committee, Mr. Bondi?
The Food-Service Strategic Planning Committee met last Thursday, the 21st. We had discussed on a previous meeting, opening a Twitter account and a Facebook account for marketing purposes, and we discussed that at length on last Thursday. We determined our target audience for each account, our organization username, we discussed profile customization, and potential images and pictures for profiles for each, for Twitter account and a Facebook account. There was a thought that there may have been a Twitter account already set up from last year, and further research proved that that was the case. So, that will be elaborated on for this year. The committee decided that content should include pictures of breakfast and lunch offerings, pictures and documentations of special events, staff pictures, and after-school events and catering. And we also decided that there should be a suggestion that students send in pictures and events for posting. We also talked about marketing, how will we get the message about the Twitter and Facebook's account out there? And we discussed, you know, hashtags, and meetings, and announcements, and e-blast, and everything else to try to get that point across. So, it was a very good meeting, and we accomplished a lot.
Great. I don't know, Mrs. Raciel, are you part of that committee? Did you want to add anything, are you good, or?
No, I think it was good. Do you want to mention that breakfast has been up at the high school?
Breakfast has been up.
Well, I guess we'll get to that operation, sorry, I'm stealing your thunder.
Okay, so we're good? Okay, great, thank you so much for that. 10.6, Mr. Deptula, for Four-School Window Replacement Project.
No change in the status, we're still working on closing it out.
Great.
Hopefully, I'll be able to report soon that we're done.
Good.
And it's closed out.
That, I'm sure that'll be a good day for you. Thank you. Item 11, Old Business, we do not have any. Item 12, Instructional Committee, Mrs. Corso, you are up.
Okay, Instructional Committee, item 12.1, can I have a motion regarding the possible action on the Superintendent's Evaluation? Mr. Vado?
Yes. Mrs. Lavell, we're gonna ask for a roll call on this emotion and the next one.
I'll second it.
We, I make a motion that-
Sorry, sorry.
He's gotta make it first, Cap.
He should second his motion for his motion.
It's been a long day already.
I make a motion that we approve the Superintendent's Evaluation.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Costelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Corso?
Yes.
Ms. Lavell?
Yes.
Mrs. Purcell?
Yes.
Mrs. Raciel?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Vado?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Can I have a motion regarding the Superintendent's Contract, please?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept a Superintendent's Contract with a year extension.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Will we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Costelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Corso?
Yes.
Ms. Lavell?
Yes.
Mrs. Purcell?
Yes.
Mrs. Raciel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Vado?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, a leave of absence, I make a motion that a leave of absence for Crystal Lacy be approved without pay in accordance with the provision of the current teacher's contract from December 16, 2019, through December 20, 2019?
Please second it.
Any discussion? All, abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here's my abstention, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Next, I make a motion that a leave of absence for Jennifer Sharp be approved without pay in accordance with the provision of the current teacher's contract from January 2, 2020, through January 31, 2020?
I second the motion.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Lastly, acceptance of a resignation, I make a motion that the Board of Ed accept the resignation of Steven Skerso, effective December 31, 2019. Mr. Skerso has been a math teacher since August 1997.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. And last part of our Instructional Committee is a presentation of a proposed revised regulation regarding homeless students.
So, this is the second read for this proposed regulation. It was presented at the November Instructional Committee. The changes to the homeless regulation are changes that are aligned with state statute and recommended by our attorneys, Shipman and Goodwin.
Any discussion? Questions? Okay, all set, thank you. We don't need to make, take consensus, or just second it, thank you.
No.
Okay, turning it over, back over to Operations Committee.
Thank you. Okay, so, item 13 is Operations, Mrs. Lavell?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. At the Operations Committee meeting this month, Mr. Deptula gave his monthly update on facilities, Mrs. Veughu shared the new posting of an IT position that was previously approved in the budget. Due to the fact that there was no quorum at the Operations meeting, because we had a number of other meetings going on at the same time, I believe our chair was at the town council?
Yeah, actually, I'm listed as, as I attended this meeting, but in fact, I was at Town Hall.
Yep.
So, that, you would need to make an amendment on that.
Well, we'll just have a correction to the minutes.
Yeah, that's the month before, isn't it?
October 15, oh, this is October 15.
Yeah, no.
Sorry, I messed up, I apologize.
Okay.
Never mind.
Okay, but that's the reason why we didn't have a quorum, we usually have a wonderfully one, attended meeting. However, there were, there were circumstances beyond our control where we had different board members at different meetings, so we didn't have the quorum, so subsequently, we're going to have to take action on items that would have been discussed in Operations Committee prior to this evening. So, it's gonna be a little lengthier agenda for Operations tonight. So, the first item is, I make a motion for the approval of the Operations Committee meeting minutes of October 15, 2019.
Second.
Discussion on the motion, corrections, deletions, additions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is 13.3, Discussion on Possible Approval to Accept the Board of Education Financial Report for October 2019, and the Financial Forecast and Munis Year-to-Date Report. Mr. Barone?
Thank you. So, this is our second projection for the fiscal year. You'll notice that we're projecting a significant increase in the surplus of about $239,000, roughly. And this is driven primarily because we've projected our excess cost estimate, and that's higher than expected. So, the tuition deficit increased, but also projecting the revenue associated with the excess cost, and that's giving us a little bit of, more of a projected surplus. The other significant change is the transportation, we're having an increase on that projection of approximately, I'm sorry, transportation is about $42,000, and that's because we had anticipated using some additional vans, and one of them did not materialize. So, that's why that projection of the surplus increased. And then, salaries, we're projecting a deficit, but the deficit was reduced because we've had some vacancies, and they weren't filled yet, so we had some savings because we didn't have people in place. Most of those vacancies, I believe, are being filled in the next couple of months.
Mr. Barone, could you just explain for the people watching at home, excess cost, and the estimate, and how the state does that, and why the timing is so late? Not from us, but from the state.
Okay, so, the excess cost is based on, there's a formula based on our average cost per pupil, and how much we spend in it, you know, over that, thus the excess cost.
In special education.
It's in special ed primarily, and typically, we're not in a position to project it at the beginning of the year. This is actually earlier that we've projected it, I think we projected it in December last year. But it's based on, you know, where we go through and project our costs at the individual level, see which students are, we are projecting to go above the threshold, and then, the state reimburses us a portion of the amount above the threshold. And there's two different thresholds, there's a threshold for students that Wallingford outplaces, and there's a lower threshold for students that are outplaced by a state agency, such as DCF or DDS. And the threshold for the state-placed students is, basically, it's one times our per-pupil cost, and for the students we outplace, it's four and a half times our per-pupil cost. So, this is our first estimate, we'll refine it once we get everything filed with the state, which is due December 1, and that's the first filing, then we'll file again on March 1, and we'll refine it then, and that'll probably, by April, we'll know the pretty much the exact number we're gonna be getting. Does that do it for you?
Well, and again, I just want to, that the percentage rate, when we get the excess cost, it's four and a half times, but then there's a percent that they reimburse us of that four and a half times.
Correct, so.
So, that's why, when in our budget document, you'll see sometimes it'll say 79%, 78%, sometimes we get 81%.
Yeah, and sometimes you get 70, it all depends because they-
Actually, it's more like 70%, yeah, sorry.
Well, we tried to-
I was wishful thinking, I was wishful thinking, 70%. So, the thing is that with also, I just want to make clear, is that that percentage is not set for us at the end of the year, in order for us to determine a budget, to reduce our budget appropriately in the timeline to meet the mayor, or even the town council. We don't know that number, really a definitive number, until usually later in May, or later.
And we don't know our expen, well, are you talking about-
Our expenditures.
Our expenditures either, so, you know, there's a lot of variation that can happen here.
So, that's where sometimes there could be, sometimes it's a good scenario, like this, and sometimes you're making, you know, you're going the other way, where you're making up for losses that the state does not make up for, so it is never an exact science.
Mrs. Corso?
When, when do we submit our per-pupil cost to the state, that they would then turn around and say, "This is what you spent," and then, so is it based on like last year's per-pupil cost, or our projected per-pupil cost? How accurate is that, in terms of like flux of students coming in and out of the district?
It's based on-
That changes that?
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Go ahead.
It's based on audited numbers that go to the state via what used to be called the EDO-1, and now called EFS, and so, we will get our, our final per-pupil cost probably next month.
For, yeah, we don't set those numbers.
The state is setting those numbers?
The state is setting the number based on what's filed by our auditors, our external auditors, and then, if there were to be revisions to the EDO-1, they would take that into account, or, excuse me, the EFS system, as it's now known.
Other discussion? Okay. I make a motion for approval and acceptance of the Board of Education Financial Report for October 2019, including the financial forecast and the Munis Year-to-Date Report.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, thank you. Discussion on Possible Approval to Accept the Cafeteria Financial Report for October 2019, Profit-Loss Year-to-Date Comparison Report, Cafeteria Operations Summary, and Munis Report. Mr. Bondi?
Okay, for the month of October, the cafeteria operations had 22 serving days. We had a revenue, revenue of $225,213, expenses of $220,684 for a surplus of $4,529. Our reimbursement detail, total reimbursement was $101,648. Revenue per day was $10,237, expense per day was $10,031. We served 48,600 meals and 2,209 meals per day. For the year-to-date, our, our revenue, I'm sorry, our 46 serving days, our revenue was $439,63. Our total expenses were $567,207, and we are currently at a loss of $128,144. Our reimbursement detail, total reimbursement to date is $197,999. Days served is 46, revenue per day is $95.45, expense per day $12,331, $96,79 meals served per day, I'm sorry, to date, and $2,089 meals served per day. The second page is the Cafeteria Operations Summary, it's a supplement to the year-to-date comparison, and the third page is the Munis Cafeteria Balance Sheet.
Questions? Mrs. Raciel?
Thank you, not necessarily on these reports, and I might have said this in a previous month, but I missed the sheet where we used to get the percentage of free and reduced by school, compared last year and this year, and it's only coming to my mind now, because we just did the PTAC update, and I remember at PTAC, us discussing that Parker Farms is over 40% now.
Correct.
So, can, can we get that sheet back?
So can, can we get that sheet back? Was that a lot of work?
No, that's fairly easy to-
Do you know which one I'm talking about, Tom?
Participation report, correct? It was normally the schools, or-
Right.
Yes, yes.
Right.
And the number, the number of free, the number of reduced.
Yes, that's right.
And it just listed, it just listed participation, or?
I'll show it to you.
Thank you.
I'll find a sample of last year's.
Other discussion on this topic? I do have a question on the Munus report, and I know that you've looked at this before. Has there been a determination on how we're going to address the unused ROA in that account?
It's under discussion right now.
Okay.
So that'll be taken up at another meeting.
Okay.
But we're, we're processing, still making sure that we have everything accounted for.
Perfect. Thank you for that update. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I make a motion for the approval and acceptance of the cafeteria financial report for October 2019, profit-loss year-to-date comparison report, cafeteria operations summary, and Munus report.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Lavell. Item 14 is New Business. I don't believe we have any. Item 15 is the Administration Report. Dr. Menzo?
Yes, I have some additional donations that came in that the board doesn't usually approve because they're less than $500, but I just did want to recognize the individuals. Mr. Carbone, our principal of Mary G. Fritz Elementary School, made a donation towards the Science Aerospace Center there in an amount of $150. So we thank Mr. Carbone for his personal donation. We also received a donation of handed children's hats and scarves from Susan O'Connell to E.C. Stevens School, so we appreciate that. And then also, Dag Hammershold Middle School received from Ashler Village, a two-sided freestanding display case that was donated to the art department. So we appreciate those donations. Definitely very kind of our community to do so. Just to go over a couple of events and activities, we will be sending out appropriate messaging of the fact that our Operations Meeting on December 9, we will be doing the facilities study update. That meeting will be an opportunity for you to hear some of the responses that we receive from the state, as well as information based on our conversations with them over the course of the last few months. So that information will be shared at that meeting. Again, it'll be in this room, 6:30 PM on December 9. We'll send out, as we've been doing, the communications to families to make sure that they're aware of the agenda, and we'll make sure that people are aware of that, that evening. That night, we'll also be going, just sharing the strategic plan updates as well. So just to give you a heads up on those, on that meeting. In addition, we did have our parent slash community budget forum. We had a very sparse turnout last week, but again, I think that most people are willing to give us their feedback after the initial budget is presented. We do send out the Google forum for families and staff to send in ideas. So we'll do the same as we always do each year for the last several years to get that feedback. The holiday events, obviously, are just on the rise. Once we get back from Thanksgiving break, we have a lot of concerts at the schools, we have a lot of events. So I would encourage you to check with your child's school, or if you're a community member and like to go to a concert. Both high schools and middle schools have wonderful concerts that are available in the evening to the public. We would encourage you to please try to join us because they're, again, amazing opportunities to see our students and also get into the seasonal spirit. This week, obviously, we have Powderpuff on Wednesday, tomorrow night is the Motorcade, and also on Thursday at 10:30 is the Thanksgiving Day Game. The Powderpuff is at Lyman Hall this year, and the game, the Queenie Bowl, is at Sheehan High School. So we encourage, again, everyone, I know Wednesday is going to be interesting with the weather. I think half of the Powderpuffs I've been to now year 11, I think half have been good weather, half of them have not been good weather. And you just wear layers and you throw your shoes out when you get home. So it's all good. And the football game, it seems like it's just going to be windy, from what I understand from our meteorologists. So we'll, we'll be able to survive that, that's for certain. So I just want to say thank you to everyone for everything that's so far this year has been successful, and want to thank everyone, and also happy Thanksgiving to all of our families, all of our board members, all community members. I can't believe it's already Thanksgiving. And as I said in my Monday memo today, when we get back, we have three weeks of school before holiday break, and that's kind of scary. That goes by with a blink of an eye. So, you know, buckle up, because after that, you know, it's really downhill.
Oh, no.
And hopefully, not downhill as in skiing, and there won't be any snow. That's my goal.
There you go.
So, again, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Menzo. Item 16, just make some announcements for December. Monday, December 2 is our Instructional Committee meeting here at 100 South Churnpike Road at 6:30, excuse me, Board Conference Room. And Monday, December 9, as previously stated, is our Operations Committee meeting, also at 6:30 here at Board of Ed Conference Room, 100 South Churnpike Road. And finally, Monday, December 16 is our televised Board of Ed meeting, which it, it's a departure. We're not at Town Hall again because we changed the date on that, pushed it up a week because of the holidays. And we'll be meeting here at 6:30, also at the Board of Ed Conference.
And if something should change with that, we are trying to see whether or not the other party or group that meets at that time-
Right.
-really needs the chambers.
Yeah, okay.
So we're, we're still in-
That's fine.
We're still in limbo, but we're-
Right now, right now, it's here.
Right now.
And, yeah, and if that changes, that's fine. I would just like to, on behalf of the Board of Ed, I would like to echo Dr. Menzo's sentiment and wish all our faculty, our staff, community members, our families, a great Thanksgiving, and hopefully they, everybody has a safe and enjoyable holiday with family members, and be ready to come back on Monday. So with that, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and this meeting's adjourned. Have a good evening. Thank you.